It is six thirty on February first, two thousand twenty-one. We'll call our special work session for Little Falls City Council. They're ordered. I just looked through. All the council members are here, so we have a forum. Our public forum is temporarily suspended. Through COVID, now build discussion. Does anyone have any questions with items on the consent agenda for tonight? Does anybody have any questions with items on the consent agenda for tonight? Council informational only items. Letter of understanding, Community Asset Development Group apartment complex. John.
Thank you, Council President. So in your, in your packet, we included our draft of a letter of understanding that we've been working on with the Community Asset Development Group. The primary folks that we've been working with are Bob Repke and Dave Picorni. Bob used, was a former mayor in Chaska, and Dave was the former city administrator there. And since they retired from their work in that, for their city, they, they started with this organization called Community Asset Development Group in an effort to, to help communities develop assets that they, they truly needed. And I actually met Bob over a year ago when he was introduced to, to me over a project that they wanted to look at regarding childcare. So their, their organization is working on a number of different projects, including housing, senior living. And recently, they, they've started to look into developing assets like childcare. And they have a project that we are also talking with them, potentially a building here in Little Falls. But when I met with Bob and then later with the mayor and Lori and Carol Anderson, one of the really opportunities that they had coming up that I felt was going to be successful and that they could really bring to our community was something around housing. And as we're learning and for those that, you know, are exposed to like the coalition and the efforts that we're doing there, workforce housing in greater Minnesota is extremely important, important need to develop and foster. And that, you know, so that's certainly something that we could see in our community having, having a high need for. I was just noticed in the paper, there's a lot of the realtors are putting up advertisements for having ready available buyers for homes in, in the community. We just don't have those for sale. So they came back to us with a proposal, looked at a different, number of different sites in town. Ultimately, they're very excited about the opportunity that we have with property that we, we call Gideon's Farm. There's a, you know, agricultural area that's ready for development. We have some residential properties already out there in the River Rock townhomes. But ultimately, they, they came back with a proposal and we're, we're just presenting to you some of these elements. And I'm gonna admit Dave to the meeting right now. And I'll do a little introduction and let him kinda talk about the project. Dave, are you there?
Damn, oh, he's unmuted.
Yeah, working. Um, Dave, if you're, if you can get unmuted, we're at the point where we're, I just did a little brief introduction of the, of your, your organization and that told them that we've been working with Bob and you on developing kind of an idea for a project. And really at the point where you can kinda tell them more about the site and what you're, what you're considering for a housing project within Little Falls.
Okay. So maybe just a little background. Bob and I have been working together for about ten years on all the Community Asset Development Group. And my background, I used to be a city manager, city administrator for forty years. So this is kind of nice coming to city council meetings, and I don't really have to go. But we, so when we, when I retired, what I wanted to do was to stay connected to typically small towns. So over the past few years, we've developed a half a dozen assisted livings in outstate Minnesota. Couple of clinics. And just recently, we started talking to cities about apartments because every non-municipal city has a housing issue. We just recently worked on one of sixty-seven in the apartment in St. Peter. And we're having very similar structure in the city. It was our partner. It's a piece of land the city owned, we acquired. Let through some development things with the city. And a few months ago, I acquired the property and construction started. We have a site we have in Worthen, Minnesota, or it would be basically the same building. So the building we're talking about is, actually, it's forty-nine units, the four that we have now. About thirty of them, thirty enclosed, parking spot. We haven't done the full market study yet in Little Falls. We think the rents are around eleven hundred dollars a month, or two per room. The challenge we have is that it costs the state to build forty-nine unit apartment building in St. Peter or in Little Falls or Worthen, Denver, cost the same. It costs the state to build it in Vinatanka. The problem is in Little Falls, we can get eleven hundred dollars a month rent. At the partly fault department in St. Peter, and it'd be seventeen hundred, eighteen hundred one in Vinatanka. And so the numbers work when you want to build in this suburban, or a real challenge in outstate. But our experience has been that outstate cities have as big of an issue, maybe bigger issue with housing, that suburban issues, communities do. So the way that we can make these work, our city acquire the land at an affordable price. We finance them through a USDA guaranteed loan. Under the USDA program, you can, they'll lend you up ninety percent of the value or seventy percent of the construction. Quite frankly, the challenge isn't the seventy percent of construction, it's ninety percent of value. So we have, the St. Peter project, we do have, come through, worked with a couple of contractors. We have, we have a third contractor that's doing this pricing. We have a customer group that's interested in doing the project. So based on this letter of intent, we think that, I'd say we're seventy-five percent there. Once we get the plan tied up, there's still some work we have to go through on the financing and, and the project design. But it's one that we're quite frankly excited about. Our involvement is that we work with the city on putting it together, we get the investors, we get it financed. And then we bring in a professional apartment manager to manage it. Investor group that will be involved in this one has one other apartment that they own. They primarily own retail buildings across, really across the state of Minnesota. So they're a larger real estate investment group, but this would be their, only their second apartment building. Kind of an overview. The building itself is a mix of one and two bedrooms, about two-thirds of units would be two bedroom. The city involvement that we're looking for would be to provide the land, create a housing, that increment district. And then we would enter into an agreement with the city where we would guarantee the property taxes. So most exit district would guarantee the, the market value and assessed value. We actually would take it one step further where we would guarantee the, the tax, annual tax income. So taxes in the future went down, the project would be required to make up the difference. And it's really structured that way to kind of take away the risk to the city that the project wouldn't proceed. Because no matter what happens, once these things are built, they always pay property taxes. Well, John, that's probably good overview and welcome to ask for questions. We, we do have a concept plan that we're probably seventy-five percent complete on, ready to submit to the city. We have not yet submitted this project for financing. But once we get a letter of intent, which kind of gives us some site control, then we can submit for financing. This is the image of kind of the building.
So are there? So are there any questions for, for Dave while we have him here? The intent was to give you a, a little bit of lead time to review this letter before we actually promote it for approval. But this is city-owned property, so that it would be part of the city council responsibility to, you know, move forward with this letter of understanding so that they can develop that site control and we can move on with the next phases. We have engaged with David John to help develop the TIP, the documentation and, and plans that we need to do for the TIP financing. And so that, to get that to kind of align with the schedule that we're looking at.
John.
Go ahead, I'll help.
Thank you. With the housing TIP district, is it always twenty-five years? Because all of the TIP districts that I've been involved with are ten-year TIP district. But this is asking for twenty-five-year TIP district, which seems a long time to give back ninety percent of their taxes, twenty-five years.
Different TIP districts have different eligibility for the, the length that they can operate. Typically, the, the nine-year ones are redevelopment TIP districts. So they're, they're, they generally tend to be the shorter ones. There are some that do allow for, for longer periods of time, and the eligibility for a residential one could be up to twenty-five years. As Dave was saying, you know, the cost of the projects, they, you know, they need the support to cash flow. You know, this cost of the project in communities like ours because the market rents aren't going to, aren't there to justify the, you know, the, the nature of the construction cost.
Council President?
Go ahead, Lori.
So the, the other thing to keep in mind is that they just, they don't automatically get ninety percent of the increment. There are certain things they can use the increment for, and that's typically things that are in the ground or under the ground. So it gets like site improvements and some of those types of things. So they have to supply us with the costs associated with those things that are in the ground, under the ground. And we will reimburse them ninety percent of the increment only up until, only for the costs that they've incurred. So if it's five hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna reimburse them five hundred thousand. We're not going to do it for twenty-five years just because that's the one in the district. The district will last as long as it needs to, to reimburse them for the expenses that they've incurred. So we've had some housing districts that have done in twenty-five years, we've had some that have paid off soon.
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Dave.
I don't have a question, but I'd just like to add that we recently had a coalition of greater Minnesota cities. Large meeting, hundred and seventy-eight people were on it at different time from different communities. Everyone on there, well, maybe not everyone, most of them spoke to the fact that they're struggling with housing. And it's just like John and, and Dave said, would it cost to build? And the payback on it through the rent isn't a rent that we can offer around here and fill the buildings. And so we're fortunate that we have this property and that we can do TIP because otherwise, I think we continue like the other communities with a large, large need for housing.
That was a subject of these, I remember it was a year ago when I went with you to Alexandria. That was a subject then as well, for a lot of places. The apartment building wasn't longer a TIP district too, wasn't it? Because that just ended, and that's been a while.
Lori?
I thought it was also the one out by Belgrade Church, the Hackett Avenue TIP. That was a twenty-five-year district. I think we've had some other housing ones that have been twenty-five.
And I did, Bob is on as well. Bob, we're just in the point where we're doing, answering questions about the project.
Okay, great, Senator White. President, my question is, is what's the appetite here in Little Falls for rental property of eleven and twelve hundred dollars a month? You know, how many, are they really, I forget what it was, ninety? Was it ninety-some units or whatever that was?
Forty-nine.
What's that?
I think it was forty-nine, he said.
Forty-nine. You know, if they, if they're not getting filled up, then, you know, what kind of effect is that gonna have?
That, that is where a housing study would be really important, and it's something that we are exploring and trying to identify some providers to, to do that work. And I think that would be good for everybody, you know, us included, to have that. Our last housing study was, is now ten years old, it was completed in two thousand and eleven. So it's really not relevant to tell you what the, what the standard market rates are. I guess, you know, I don't know what they're, they're going for now, but five years ago, when I came here, I know the apartments right across the street from City Hall, you know, those are high-earning apartments. They're, at that time, they were, I think, going around at sixteen hundred dollars, but they were three-bedroom, three-bath with garage, you know. So it was certainly, and on the river, so certainly a high-level apartment. And, you know, I can tell you, I've seen that they're right outside my, my office window. I've only seen that, that, you know, available for rent sign up once, and that was recently. And now, you know, somebody was, is moving in, so it wasn't, it didn't sit vacant for very long. So I mean, there's, there's definitely some appetite for, for people to, to pay on the, you know, rents would, you know, seemingly to us might be, might be higher. But I haven't been in the marketplace for housing in a while, so I don't, I can't really tell you exactly what that number is today.
John, this is Bob. We, when we came up there a couple times and looked at some different properties and understood what the, what the rental rates were at, you know, it was frankly a bit of a surprise that, in terms of, it may be a bit higher than we had maybe initially thought. And so we left there believing that, you know, the market could bear the, the numbers we were talking about. But we do have a proposal from Mansfield to do a housing study, that we're gonna need for financing regardless. And so we'll, you know, we're just wrapping up with an investor, working with an investor of the project. And that would be one of the first costs that we've incurred with them. And, you know, that would be sooner or later in terms of us even get that done. And that'll, and that'll hopefully reinforce what the numbers could be. So, yeah, once we get, if we get the letter of intent executed, we will fund the market study and we'll be glad to share that with the city. That's kind of part of our approach, is we like to really partner with the city. So we, they, the market will support it. We don't know, you know, how deep it is. But it appears that there's quite a, but again, you're really not a lot different than other cities that we've talked to. For example, the project we're working on in Worthen, they, they probably have enough of the subsidized affordable housing apartments. But they have a backlog of people who don't qualify for the subsidized that want the rent. And so it, so we did, we did do a study in St. Peter, and we found there that the, of the eight hundred and ninety rental units, they had seven vacancies. So that was like less than one percent vacancy rate. So it's pretty common that's happening in the regional centers across the state. But the challenge is to, to make the numbers work. This project will be about eight and a half million dollars. We think it'll appraise for about six and a half million dollars based on eleven hundred dollars of rents. And that's, that, that gap between what they're supposed to construct it, what they'll appraise at, is the challenge.
Council President, I'd just like to add, when we, when our apartment in our attic came available, we had at least eight parties interested in renting it. We didn't even advertise it. So, and there are people out there looking for rental properties for sure.
Mr. President, I personally happen to know because of two family members that live in the development towards Mr. Hurcocks place. And when I've spoken with Roaches, they've got developments all over this area. And they had a waiting list of up to ten people at the Roach Porplexes or wherever they are. So I know there's some demand for it.
Are those rentals or are they?
They're rentals.
Rentals, yeah.
Did, did they, did they get a TIP district for their project? I don't recall.
For the project though, off of Riverwood, no, they did not. They have received, they have done TIP for some of their other projects here at home.
Okay, so, I mean, they, they managed to put in a housing project, purchased land from the market, not giving it to them. And somehow they figured out how to construct something that's gonna cash flow up. I'm, I'm gonna tell you right now, I looked at this in, in great detail when it first came out to us. I understand there's a housing shortage, but I, I have a hard time stomaching just handing over three and a half acres for a dollar and then doing a TIP district for twenty-five years. I mean, essentially, what we're gonna be doing here is going to our neighbors and asking them to fork over cash to give to a developer to make up what's, what sounded like a pretty big shortfall in construction cost and appraised value. Which that's the first time I'm hearing that too, since we have him on the call. I had no idea how expensive this project was. So I'm just gonna, before it comes up for a vote, start working on how you're gonna sell me on this project because as of right now, I'm not going to be for it.
Do we have any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen, for your information and for coming tonight. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Year-end transfers, Lori?
Yes, so tonight on the agenda, we have the resolution that would approve the year-end transfers. Looking at the list, most of them are budgeted transfers for insurance. They are transfers for the money from the enterprise funds that comes back into the general fund to cover expenses that we incur. Others after that are the budgeted transfers for, out of the general fund and out of the utility funds to pay for debt service and those types of things. The very last two transfers on the second page that are kind of set apart, those are transfers out of the general fund, one to the equipment fund and one to the Gulf operating fund. So at the end of two thousand and twenty, the general fund, we are projecting a cash surplus in the general fund of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We could certainly leave all that money in the general fund, but we do certainly have places that we can spend that money. So typically at the year-end, we would look at some of those options of funds that, you know, we need with some cash or to try and get them out of the red, or setting some funds away for future projects. So John and I spoke, and our recommendation is that we take of that one ninety-four cash surplus in the general fund, we could take a hundred thousand dollars of that and put it in the equipment fund. The equipment fund is kind of our catch-all fund, if you will, where we set money aside for various projects or pieces of equipment, those kinds of things. And then the other piece of that would be to put fifty thousand in the Gulf, excuse me, Gulf operating fund to help offset some of the expenses and costs that are, you know, incurred in the Gulf fund and try and get that fund out of the red. The operating fund at the end of two thousand and twenty will now be in the black, so that is awesome. So now we can start working on the operating fund.
Sorry, Lori, you, the equipment fund for Gulf is actually in black, I mean, operating fund is?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I said that out loud.
The other forty thousand stays in the general fund?
Right, it would stay in the general fund, correct. We do have a fund balance policy, and in the, the general funds, special revenue funds, we look to get to a thirty-five to fifty percent cash balance in those funds. We started, in order to get a thirty-five percent cash balance, we need one point eight million dollars in that fund. We started the year at one point six five four. After we make these transfers, we would be at just about one million seven hundred thousand. So we're working our way towards that thirty-five percent. We've been able to increase that fund balance every year. Auditors and bond counselor, bond rating, they look at that. They, as long as we're making progress to get to that point, you know, they're very happy with that.
Any questions from Lori? Sidewalk or motions?
Oh, sorry, Council President, I would, I would say that it's, one of the reasons we're just suggesting so much to the equipment fund right now is, is really that we don't, we, we know we have some projects coming up, and that, I think you can, you can kind of think of that. is, is really that we don't, we, we know we have some projects coming up and that, I think you can, you can kind of think of that as, you know, our opportunity to, to take the money from, from that as, um, some of that undesignedated pool to, to maybe pay for those projects that might be coming up that we, we didn't budget for over the year. This year, either we didn't anticipate that they would be coming up at this time or, you know, or it's something that is, is new to us that we just, we just discovered, you know, our budget process goes, um, six months from, from last year. So there's definitely things that are going to come up in the following budget years that we didn't reserve the, the money for. But this gives us a lot of flexibility in order to, you know, make those changes and, and pay for something that we want to take advantage of.
And I would say the other thing is, why, if we leave the money in the general fund and increase that, um, cash, uh, fund balance, cash balance in there. And then next year we decide, or in twenty twenty-one, we decide we want to use some of that money, um, that we put in there for other purposes. Well, then our cash fund bound, or our cash balance decreases and that's not a good thing when auditors and, and bond rating companies are looking. You know, they want to see a small, we'd rather see small increases than, you know, hills of valleys, you know, than increases, decreases, increases, decreases. They don't want to see that. They want to see a slow, progressive increase in balance.
Mr. President, uh, just a question, why is Parks and Rec so high, six hundred ninety-four thousand?
Um, that was the?
That was, that was the budgeted amount, so, um, we had budgeted six ninety-four to go from the general fund into Parks and Rec. And then if you look further down on the list, there is a transfer from the park improvement, or excuse me, from the park operating to the park improvement of two hundred and thirty. So that money gets in the, um, that's how we get money in the park improvement fund to go in a major improvements at the parks.
So if you go back to the twenty nineteen budget process, we had the hundred thousand dollars that we reserved for, um, either the Van Shell, and the Van Shell project as well as splash pads. Uh, because we did have cash, you know, cash surpluses and are able to, to make those budget transfers, we did move forward with that. Um, the other thirty, I think, was for some playground improvement items.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sidewalk promotions, COVID-nineteen discussion. Lori?
Um, yes, so we've had some, um, a couple of the downtown businesses call and just ask if the city was going to consider, um, allowing the sidewalk, um, the use of the city sidewalks again in this summer like they did last summer. So with the COVID, um, and, um, you know, the city allowed businesses to put stuff on the sidewalks without having any insurance. We allowed some of the restaurants to use, um, you know, part of the alleyway. We had some picnic tables that we delivered, um, so people could sit outside on the sidewalks. So just wondering if the council is interested in developing or, or asking staff to develop some type of policy or something, um, to allow that again this year or, um, you know, because we don't have governor's orders shutting things down right now, is that something that are going to pass on this summer?
Mr. President, I've had, uh, a lot of the downtown business owners, uh, would have a concern if we're going to continue to do that every summer only because there's a lot of shopping downtown. And I was the one that, uh, one of them that asked for that this last year with COVID. But now I'm hearing some blowback from people saying that, um, they don't really want, uh, people out on the sidewalk with drinks and I'm sure we could do something, uh, to avoid that. But, um, just got some blowback on that, so I want to throw it out there.
I, I would be interested in hearing something about that, Mr. Mayor, because, uh, I, I haven't, I certainly believe you, but I was ready to go. I, I, I'm all for it. I, I thought it was kind of neat. It was different getting people out, outside. Um, if we're doing this to a detriment to another business, I want to make sure we address that concern.
I think that special times come for special measures. And if we don't have any mandates from the governor shutting restaurants down, then I think we should try to leave the sidewalks open. And, and keep in mind, it's, it's not just the bars and the restaurants. We have, um, you know, stores downtown that, that do a retail business that have asked as well. Well, we allow that with a permit generally, don't we? Right, they have, they have permanent insurance and last year we made some of those restrictions.
Mr. President, with the uncertainty of what's going to happen in the future, um, and what I understand is the staff wants to know they want to come up with a proposal, um, I would, I would say, let's go ahead and come up with a proposal, um, in order to do that so that we have it in case we have to. Kind of like, uh, you know, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of here. I mean, let's, let's have it there and if we get to that point where, uh, it does close down again or if we decide we want to continue it, we have a policy that's already developed. We don't have to start working on it right in summer and try to get it done and pass so that they can do it. So, I mean, if we have it in our pocket before it all plays out, then we're ahead of the game.
I think we had it in our pocket last year, Jerry. Um, I don't know why we would have to change anything from.
Okay, well, I would just assume if they were going to, uh, come up with a new policy or whatever, but, yeah, we're, last year we were fine with it.
Yeah, I think, I think the reasoning there, in fact, was kind of what Rickel was saying is that, you know, we had very specific circumstances of why we wanted to start allowing this. And, um, now if those circumstances aren't in place for the summers, i.e., you know, restrictions on how many people can be in a building at one time, uh, you know, for those businesses, uh, and they want to be enough, except for if you can expand to outside, um, use of the space, like, you know, that's something I think might be of consideration forward. It's just what are the, you know, what are the reasons we want to do that? If it's not for pandemic purposes, then maybe it becomes economic purposes for those businesses. But at what trade-offs does the mayor's, you know, it may be detrimental to some, good for some businesses, but detrimental to others.
Well, there's still restrictions, although it opened up some, I mean, there's still capacity limits in, inside. Now I'm getting more to the bars and restaurants, but, and I don't see that, I don't see that change, just to hunch, I don't see that changing before summer's over.
Well, we have ordinances in place for a reason. And if, you know, if there's an extenuating circumstance like a pandemic, then you, you know, you, you make some changes to those to get people through the pandemic. But once the pandemic's over, you go back to your ordinances because they're there for a reason.
But, but is the pandemic over?
No, it knows.
No, it absolutely isn't, does not. We're, we're still under the governor's emergency orders.
Right, and as long as that's in place, then we do what we can for our downtown businesses.
Well, we, we already hit for the same thing, why would we?
Right.
Um, why would we change it?
Right.
Because, Mr. Mayor, you brought up that it's, it's causing an issue with some of the other businesses. So I, I want to make sure we're cognizant of that as well.
Good point. Any other items? Any constituent messages?
Yes, uh, from Mr. Creshaw is heading north on Leopard Drive. Uh, gets some complaints that the plows go through and they go through really quick and are filling up the sidewalks with hard ice and whatever, and it's hard for people to clean it off. Uh, they're wondering if it was a possibility they could slow down and not spray it out so hard, cover the sidewalks because it is their responsibility to keep the sidewalks clean. But there are some people who don't actually have the equipment to remove all that kind of big chunks of ice and everything that is shooting up over there. Uh, one of the constituents who spoke about it said, uh, it used to be where it was never an issue. It's just been in the last couple of years and, uh, they're wondering why the policies changed and if they could slow it down or something just to kind of keep it less work for the people. Anyway, let's get to that.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else?
Council President, if I may, give a couple of updates, just.
Sure.
Uh, so I did want to, uh, share with the group, we did get the local option sales tax rep, uh, resolution in place. Um, and all the documentation submitted to the proper committee chairs and assistant chairs or, uh, minority leaders and those, uh, and those. Uh, we did send that as well to Senator Zelka and Representative Creshaw. And I have word that Representative Creshaw is supportive and will, you know, author that for us. Um, the League of Minnesota Cities, which has been tracking this issue, said that there's, uh, twenty cities that, that, um, submitted for proposals this time. I think last year there might have been thirty, like, we're on to say like thirty that had submitted. So a few of them have, um, retracted because none of the proposals that were submitted last year went through. Um, they're, you know, very much like, uh, our project. I, I think of the most, the most common project is, is a, our community centers. Um, Litchfield, uh, is looking at one. And then there's a bunch that are like repairs to existing ones, like in Fergus Falls, uh, Crane Rapids. Herman Towne has a project in there similar to ours. But, but I did want to point out there was one for a childcare facility in Warren, Minnesota. So, um, you know, it's certainly something that's, that's of interest to, to communities to be, to be putting together. Um, then I wanted to echo what, uh, the mayor was saying with the coalition agreement, so the cities meeting last week, our legislative update, a lot of participation in that, which is great to, great to see because, um, so many of our communities have so many of the same issues. So it really carries a lot more weight when we, um, can all come with a kind of shared message when we're talking to the legislators, uh, that are in session now. Um, the positive news that's really coming out with governor's proposal is that local government aid, uh, looks like it's going to be kind of helped normalists this year in terms of making sure that they pay, pay out the, uh, twenty twenty-one allotment and then, um, carrying forward in the next, uh, biennium that, uh, that local government aid is, is seeing no reduction uh, in the, in the amount that they contribute. There's no increase, but we'll take, um, we'll take sand path for two years. There's, you know, especially in the face of, of the, um, somewhat of a deficit that the legislature is facing in the next biennium. So, uh, that's really good news for us. Um, hopefully the February for our fiscal forecast kind of, um, reinforces that, that the revenue projections that are there uh, and, uh, potential expenses that they're going to see in that, uh, LGA will really still be, um, you know, still be put in the position where it is. So, you know, right now that accounts for about forty percent of our general fund budget. So it's a, you know, it's a diminishing amount, but still critically important to what we need to, to do to operate the, the general fund the way that we do.
Anything else? Thank you, John. Then it's seven fourteen, we'll adjourn our work session and I'll see you at seven thirty.